Good afternoon. Welcome to special meeting, Monday, January 23rd. Meeting of the Parks, Recreation and Community Services Commission. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sasatryan?
President.
Fawad?
Here.
Michaels?
President.
Wu?
President.
President Kalfayan?
President.
The agenda for the January 23rd, 2017 special meeting was posted on the bulletin board outside City Hall on or before Friday, January 20th, 2017. Item two, upcoming council agenda items.
Thank you. President Kalfayan, members of the Commission, on January 24th, we will be taking a report to City Council in regards to the Verdugo Park North Master Plan, motion authorizing the city manager or designated to execute a professional services agreement with DVD, David Walz, design for, design of the master plan. On January 31st, a report regarding approval of specifications for the landscape contract that we have with Parkwood. We will be RFPing a new landscape contract for next fiscal year. And on February 7th, award of contract for the Duke Major and Barn Design Services. So we have three items, one each week for the next three weeks.
Your second item, that was the, that was the firm that does the landscaping around the city.
Sorry if you could turn on the mic.
Your second item was the, that's the firm that does landscaping around the city, various?
The parkways and greenways.
As I've mentioned a number of times before, the San Fernando Corridor definitely needs attention. Hopefully that's getting some attention in your negotiations.
Yes, we will work, we will work with the new vendor on San Fernando.
Thank you.
Next is the?
Item three, Commission staff comments.
No comments. Okay, next item.
President Kalfayan, if Commissioners do not have any comments, I'd like to actually go through our calendar of events, if you don't mind.
Go ahead, please.
Bring up the presentation. The 2017 homeless count is taking place on January 24th and 25th. On the 24th, it's from 8:00 PM to 10:00 PM, and on the 25th, from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM. We have a parents' night out at Spar Heights Community Center on January 27th, from 6:00 PM to 12:00 AM. A teen night out at Pacific Community Center on February 3rd, 2017, from 5:30 PM to 9:00 PM. We have a Riverwalk Workday at Glendale Narrows Riverwalk on February 4th, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. We have a Club Maple Valentine's Day Celebration at Maple Park Community Center on February 9th, from 5:30 PM to 8:00 PM. Club Maple is a free program open to all developmentally disabled adults. Trail Maintenance Workday is taking place on February 11th, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM at Duke Major Wilderness Park. We have a Born to Be Wild Wilderness Workday at Duke Major Wilderness Park on February 18th, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. We have another parents' night out, this time at Pacific Community Center on February 10th, from 6:00 PM to 12:00 AM. Another teen night out is taking place at Pacific Community Center on February 17th, from 5:30 PM to 9:00 PM. We're offering a Healthy Teens Workshop featuring smoothies, Pacific Community Center, February 17th, at 6:30 PM. We're offering a Teen Art Class at Pacific Community Center also on February 17th, from 7:30 PM to 8:30 PM. We have a CDBG Advisory Committee Special Meeting taking place here in the council chambers on February 24th, starting at 8:00 AM. And this is a reminder to submit your Arbor Day donation form now through February 28th. Arbor Day is taking place on March 7th, 2017, starting at 10:30 AM. More information will be provided during oral communications. Registration is now open for the Verdugo, for, sorry, Verdugo Mountains 10K Trail Run and Hike, taking place at Brand Park on May 7th, 2017, starting at 8:00 AM. For registration, you can go to www-runtheverdugos.com. And we'll be back here in the council chambers for another special meeting of the Parks Commission on February 27th, at 2:30 PM. For more information, you can call 818-548-2000, or visit www.glandelca.gov/residents/calendar. Thank you.
Okay, next item, please.
I have one quick question, if I may. This is directed to the staff. I know that we hold various events. There's a teen night out, there's the parents outing, and so forth. Do we have any way of seeing the participation and to seeing exactly who does partake in these meetings and events that we are hosting?
Sure. I'll defer to our community services.
All right, thank you.
President Kalfayan, Commissioner Wu, yes, we do. We do have information on the number of participants. If you would like, some of the information will be provided in the annual reports throughout the year, depending on the facility that the event takes in. But if there is specific interest on those numbers, we could always bring back a report. If any of the managers have it available off the top of their head, we can provide that information now. Otherwise, we can come back to you with a report if there's a specific program you're interested in.
Okay, so I just would like to see how much participation we're getting with the teens night out and the parents night out, just to see.
Looks like Gabrielle's coming out, so she might have information on one or two of those.
Oh, that was quick. Thank you.
I'm ready for you, President Kalfayan and Commissioner Wu. We actually do report on it usually in our monthly activity reports, which we, the Recreation and Community Services portion is at the end of the meeting. I have numbers that I can provide to you at that time for December's, December's activities. And I'll make a note of including those kinds of figures in each of our monthly activity reports for you all, so that you'll get it every month.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Next item, please.
Excuse me. President Kalfayan, members of the Commission, on January 14th, we had the Palmer Park regrander opening. It was a very successful event. We have a lot, we had a lot of participation, a lot of kids out there in, on the skate park, basketball court, and playground area. And I know there were some concerns regarding security and safety. This is why I invited Officer Cozes from our Crime Impact Team to talk about security and some minor issues at Palmer Park. One thing that I'd like to mention, as part of the design, we did add a police drive path from one side of the park to the other side of the park, which has been very useful for the police department. But I would like Officer, if you have any questions, please, you know, Officer Cozes is here, and he'll be answering any questions in regards to the Palmer Park security.
Thank you, Director Bolinikin and Commission members. Again, I'm Officer Steve Cozes with the Glendale Police Department on the Crime Impact Team. I've addressed you before on, on other matters, the park suspension notice being one of them. We're also participating in the homeless count with your staff on Tuesday and Wednesday, providing security for their volunteers who are doing the count. So we'll be escorting them on Tuesday night and Wednesday morning. At Palmer Park specifically, we, during the time that the, the park was being renovated to the town, to the time now that it's open, we had two arrests there for trespassing. People were going over the fence and sleeping there after hours. They were both cited and released. Since reopening, the, the officers have been doing extra patrol through the areas. We have had a couple calls for disturbances there, where officers have, one, driven through using the driving path, and also walked through. I've driven the path myself. It's much better than it was, where I could enter off of Boynton and had to exit on Boynton, but now I could drive all the way through to Palmer, which is very convenient for officers to do so. It's a lot like car park, where we can go from Colorado to Harvard. Let's see, we also can use the park suspensions there. They, they were not used in the latest trespassing arrest. That was early in January. The officers believe that they could make the, make the message clear with using just the citations only. Those are the, those are the things that I have for you. It's really a short report on our, on our efforts at Palmer Park between the time it was closed to the time it's now reopened. Hasn't been a whole lot. I know that there was a power line down there today, and GWP is out there to replace the, replace the lines, and the fire department closed the gates. But we were out there for safety and security as well. Any questions from Commission members?
I know there was a comment that was sent from the public to the Commission about one incident at the skate park with a altercation between older skaters and younger skaters. My comment and my thought was to make sure that there was a, a prominent police presence since the park opened, just to deter that problem at the start, and make sure that all patrons know that the presence is there, and encourage people to follow the rules and use the park properly, rather than let a situation escalate.
I'm aware of the comment. I have actually a copy of it here. I've read it, and that's, there's not, not much to enforce there, yet, except uniform presence and a black and white car will help with people behaving and making, and being nice to each other. So I have asked officers through a hot board, it's basically a clipboard that goes out at every roll call. It's got, it's got the hours that are, the park is normally used, or a high population. I asked them to please do extra patrol after school and during the hours that skaters are there, make their presence known, meet and greet, say hello, wave and say hi. It works. So that, that did go out last week, early last week, and officers have been making their way through the park. I see it in the call logs, that they are initiating their own observations out there, rather than being called to the park for a reason. I can see that there.
That was my only concern. I'm glad that that is happening.
Okay.
Any other concerns?
Thank you. Have a great afternoon.
Thank you. Looks very safe, yeah. Next item, please.
Next, we have oral communications. It's item four. I believe we have a couple of speaker cards.
Kay Hassler, Hassetler? Welcome back.
Good afternoon, President Kalfayan and members of the Commission. The park has been open for 16 days. I bet it's rained for seven or eight of those, and I think maybe it's brought good news for California, because even the original opening date had to be postponed because of, of weather. I came to let you know, thank you first of all for the officer's report about the security, because I'm really pleased that there are a lot of people over there, because there's a lot of people using the park, too. In the 16 days that the park has been open, I've heard skaters at 9:15 in the morning, 11:15 in the morning, they're still there, you know, at 9:30 in the evening, and I was really surprised. Sunday night, a week ago, I went to visit a neighbor, and I parked about a third of the way up Cypress, which is up the hill toward Forest Lawn, and I was really stunned when I opened my car door, and the first thing I heard was a basketball court and skateboard noises. And I'm wondering if the noises are just, you know, traveling right up the hill, because people said they have heard them on the sidewalk there, and on the sidewalk going up the hill on the west side of Oak Ridge. I really, really appreciate the lights being dimmed for the basketball courts, and I know people would probably like to have the courts open all the time. Right now, the skate park is open all the time, and it's open till 10 o'clock at night, and that beautiful light that lights it so well, the light flows right over into the basketball courts. So there'll be kids playing over there as best as they can. Last Wednesday, I took a tour, and I went to skate parks in Los Angeles, Burbank, South Pasadena, and La Cremona to check on the hours, the lighting, the fencing, and where homes are located. And I also made a return visit to our own Verdugo Skate Park to verify what the hours are. No one at any of those parks that is expected to deal with the noisy situation that we are dealing with Palmer Park, because it's open 15 hours a day and seven days a week. And in Burbank, where there are houses on three sides of the park, the skate park is fenced, and on four days, the park is open from 4:00 to 8:00 during school hours, and from 4:00 to 9:00 on Fridays. During the school breaks, the skate park has much longer hours on the weekdays and weekends, too. But on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Sundays, it closes at 5:00 PM, according to the hours that are posted there on a permanent sign at the park. In South Pasadena and over at Lincoln Plaza in Los Angeles, which is near General Hospital, both of those parks are just huge. You need a car to drive through the one in South Pasadena, in the south end of the Arroyo Canyon, but there are no homes anywhere nearby, and both parks close at dusk. There are absolutely no lighting on the skate park at either park. The one in South Pasadena has a fence around it, the one in Lincoln Park does not. And as you all probably know, the Verdugo Park does not open until 4:00 PM, so the hours there are already limited. And I don't know if the neighbors there can hear the skate park. There's a couple of houses visible way at the top of the hill, and after what I've learned about Cypress Hill, or Cypress Park, maybe it's possible that the noise is going up there. The houses to the north seem to be about a quarter of a mile away. Crescenta Valley County Park opened a skate park in June, June 30th, which I didn't know about until this week. It closes at dusk. It is fenced. It has no lights, and there are some houses across the street. Separating the houses from the skate park, because skate park is really close to the sidewalk, are six lanes, four lanes of traffic, two lanes for parking, and on a busy street, Honolulu, it's possible that that noise helps to ameliorate the, the noise. So when residents live as close to Palmer Park as we do, those of us on Boynton and those of us on Oak Ridge, I think it's really important to give us some consideration, because we would like to have some compromise. Right now, the basketball continues, and the skating definitely continues, because it is very well lit until 10 o'clock at night. And the sound does carry into places that I didn't think that it would carry. I'm very grateful that it does not carry into my house right now, but we don't have our beautiful 80, 90-degree weather when we all open up our doors and windows, so I don't expect that to be quiet inside when we get to the nice, warm weather. I hope that the hours for the skating can be changed or limited. Teenagers are not stopping playing at dusk. Many of the kids that drive in could be driving over to Pacific Park to play basketball, and they could be driving to Verdugo Park to skate. So I thank you very much for hearing me today, and for all the good things that you have done at the park, and how popular it is, and we really do need it in our community. There's no question of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Roberta Medford.
Hello, I'm Roberta Medford from Montrose, President Kalfayan, and Commissioner's staff, audience, and viewers. I'm very pleased to be here representing Glendale Beautiful, a nonprofit that's been serving Glendale since 1950. On behalf of our President Matt Gandy and the whole board, I would like to announce the 2017 Arbor Day commemoration and tree donation opportunity. As you see on the screen, the Arbor Day observance will be March 7th at the Casa Dobe de San Rafael, unless it's pouring down rain, at which case it will be in this lower level of the Civic Center. The important date first, though, is the deadline for tree donations, which is February 28th, so that we then have time to make people the nice certificates that they get at the observance in March. You will find this donation form on the city events webpage, linked under the dates of March 7th and under February 28th. And you can also, I'm very pleased to announce, go to the Glendale Beautiful webpage, glendalebeautiful.org, where you will find the donation form, and you will also be able to pay by credit card, something we have never been able to facilitate for people. Not that we are not happy to take checks, we love your checks, but you, if you do want to use a credit card and you're willing to pay a small fee, which is what they charge us to use the credit card, you can do that on the glendalebeautiful.org website, or you can go to the glendaleca.gov under the events calendar, and find the form to download for the traditional mailing in and paying by a check. I'm happy to answer questions. I believe you all got a copy of the form. It's always a very lovely event. It's, it's very heartening, because people give trees in honor of their loved ones, and things, and, and people, and events, and causes that they hold dear. So we love the event, and we love helping the city get more trees to park, to plant in park and library areas. The event is done in cooperation with the city's Department of Community Services, Parks and Community Services, excuse me, and with Glendale Beautiful cooperating. So thank you very much, and let me know if I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Good cause, thank you. Next item, please.
Next is item five, consent items at A, approval of the minutes of the Commission regular meeting held on December 19th, 2016.
Okay, do I have a motion to move the, to move the minutes?
President Kalfayan, members of the Commission, for the benefit of the viewing audience, in your packets is a copy of the revised minutes that were emailed to you and posted on the city's website earlier today. Commissioner Michaels was kind enough to point out a spelling error in the first sentence under item two. The word "here" was changed to "there." He additionally suggested that in the second paragraph of item 6A1, the term applicant type B be better defined, so that a reader does not need to reference the staff report. So if you would use the revised minutes, that'd be great.
I move their approval.
Second?
If I can second, I'll second.
Hey, I'll take roll call. Commissioner Sasatryan?
Yes.
Fawad?
Yes.
Michaels?
Yes.
Wu?
I'm staying.
President Kalfayan?
Yes.
Okay. Item six, action items at A, proposed fees for Central Park Paseo and Civic Center Plaza.
Good afternoon, President Kalfayan and Commissioners. My name is Eileen Asayen, Community Services Supervisor for the Customer Service Office. I'm here today for the recommendation to establish fees for the Central Park Paseo and Civic Center Plaza. The Central Park Paseo is located adjacent to the Museum of Neon Arts at 220 South Brand Boulevard, between Brand and Central Park. And Civic Center Plaza is between City Hall, 613 East Broadway, and the Perkins Building at 141 North Glendale. I believe these are included in the packets. The fees we are recommending are based on staff recommendations, and also other facilities that we have nearby. For example, Central Park Paseo is near the Adult Recreation Center, so the fees, we use the adult recreation as a benchmark, since they are very close in size, and also their walking distance from each other. In order to reserve both the facilities or the areas, they do have to do, the clients would have to do a special event permit and go through the city clerk's office. Alcohol would also be allowed per the alcohol policy, and also insurance requirements would apply. The fees that we suggest does not include equipment and staff fees, so based on, we would work with the client and see what the rental is. And if they need equipment, staff, and security, then the fees would vary. We are anticipating a revenue of about $3,400 annually. Staff estimates approximately six rentals annually at $400 each, total of $2,400 for the Central Park Paseo. Civic Center, two reservations annually with the $500 each. We do not have a history of reservations for the areas, so we hope to get that for our next annual report, for the customer service annual report that I'll be presenting. Excuse me. So we would have a better understanding for the next year. And that's about it. Any questions?
Could we possibly consider different rates for nonprofits and community organizations? Do we have that for other facilities?
Onic.
President, excuse me, President Kalfayan, members of the Commission, nonprofit rate is usually a 25% discount of the standard rate, so we could include that in the report next, if we come back, or give a 25% discount off the standard rate of $500 for the Civic Center Plaza, and $80 an hour, which I believe the nonprofit rate will be $60 an hour for the Central Park Paseo.
And then I think you mentioned staff, and I understand the equipment rental and so forth, but do you usually require staff? Is that something that's basically?
We do.
So can we actually make sure that, that is also broken down here, versus it just saying if staff is needed, if staff is actually needed all the time, then that should be included within the numbers that we're seeing here?
Commissioner Sasatryan, the staff fee is already approved, which is probably why it wasn't included in this report. We do have a pre-approved staff fee, and depending on the rental, depending on how many staff would be required, we would then require that rental to have, to pay for the staff that would be required, number of staff times the number of hours. So the reason it wasn't included in this report specifically is because it's already pre-approved by the, it was already approved by the Commission prior to this commission, so, and it's standard for all of our rentals. But noted that we can include the amount if that's what you're asking for.
I, I'd like to be able to see the, at least the minimum, so for example, if, you know, one of those locations requires a minimum of at least one staff, then that should be included within the proposal that is being recommended. So if it's two staff, three staff, whatever it may be, we should be able to see at least the minimum, the company or nonprofit would have to pay, aside from that fee that you're recommending. Does that make sense?
It does.
Well, Commissioner Sasatryan, it depends on the size of the event. So if we have a, a festival at the Civic Plaza, usually we'll have four to five employees at $20 an hour per employee. If we have an event similar to a holiday tree lighting, two, three employees, it depends how large the event is. So we can itemize it, but we can mention that it'll be an additional $20 an hour per employee, depending on the size of the event.
Well, I think what you're saying, if I may, is that there's no reference that you have to have at least some staff, so whatever, whenever this goes out to the public, they mention staff is required, you know, amount depending on event kind of thing. But some mention that it isn't just 200 plus 80, it's 280 plus at least one staff, maybe more, depending on the event.
We could include that in all our marketing and materials, marketing brochures.
Okay.
How did you come up with these, how did you come, these numbers, are they, how did you come up with these numbers?
For example, for the Central Park Paseo, we use the Adult Recreation Upper Courtyard, which is almost the same exact size. One is, I believe, 0.9 acres, and the other is, I think, 0.14 acres. So we use that as a benchmark to use for that area. But for the Civic Center one, that's staff recommendation, and we don't have any history of it, so that's something we can definitely revisit at the end of the year for our report, and see if we want to increase the rate, or keep it as same.
Can you, can, can the Chess Park Paseo be rented as well?
The Chess Park is, no, not that. This is towards the Central Park area and also the Civic, but not the Chess Park.
I know it's not included, but you can't rent the Chess Park.
No, no, that's only the.
President Kalfayan, Commissioner Fawad, currently, we, Economic Development Department has an agreement with a new restaurant coming to town to use the 2,600 square foot of the Chess Park for outside dining, so therefore, we won't be available, we won't make the facility available for rent.
Well, so it's a, it's a passageway.
It's a passageway, yes.
Between the parking garage and the street, so you have to sort of keep it open.
Yes.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Are there current fees now? I know there have been events at both locations. Are we establishing a brand-new fee that there was no history of, or is there an existing history or agreements?
It's brand-new fees, there is no history of it. There has, there have been other events, but we haven't been charging them, so this is why we want to establish something that we can start charging for the organizations and, you know, other renters that are interested businesses.
Okay.
So do I need to move something to incorporate the nonprofit discounts, or just make a recommendation?
We'll move it in the suggestion that we are establishing Central Park Paseo and Civic Center Plaza with discount to the nonprofit organizations.
I would mention a nonprofit, nonprofit rate, which per policy is 25% off of the discount rate, and a commercial rate is 50% more than our standard rate. So we can do those calculations. those calculations as part of our citywide fee schedule.
Can you explain the latter for the standard?
I'm sorry?
What's the commercial rate?
You had said commercial rate, so if, let's say you have a film company or a corporation that wants to use the facility for a large fundraising event, we would charge 50% more than the standard rate since it's an event that, where they'll be making money, then we would charge more, which is usually 50% of our standard rate. 50% more than our standard rate.
Who would pay this rate then? Because it's not a nonprofit.
The standard rate is a regular person that would, regular group that wants to use the facility would pay the standard rate.
That's not nonprofit.
That's not nonprofit, yes.
What would be considered a regular group?
A wedding party, someone wants to use the facility to take wedding photography, we would charge the standard rate.
Now, if the, if the rental fee requires a rental agreement, is that explained to someone when they come in to rent it?
Yes.
That these are the standing policies of the Parks Department and these are the fees that would be required? Because I think we're getting, I think our concern is if we're looking at promoting just this one, this one location, this one fee and saying this is all there is, if someone were to come in, is that better explained to them following the existing park policies?
Correct. When they reserve the facility, they do get a facility agreement form where they read all of everything that we have established as rules and regulations and they get a copy and initial everything, so a copy is kept with us in our office and they get a copy of that. And if we require additional insurance, for example, if they're requiring, they want to have alcohol on site and it's a wedding venue, then they'd have to go through the proper channels of getting insurance, having for our security and additional $25 per security and all of that is explained to them during the rental.
Is that fair?
That's fair. I have filed for those permits with the different organizations, I'm familiar with the process, so the procedures I'm aware of. I think the question is for many of the commissioners is how that procedure is explained in the marketing material and the promotional material, that it's not just this set fee, it is more, more that's required.
Definitely, we can definitely include that in our marketing as far as the staff fee goes and additional alcohol and security guard, we could definitely include that in our promotion.
Okay. Any other questions? Otherwise, we have to have a motion to move and establish a fee for the parks.
I can make the motion.
President Calfayan, it is a resolution that you're approving, so if you want to move the resolution with direction to please include a nonprofit rate and a commercial rate, and then if you want to approve that resolution, we'll go ahead and do the calculations because what's in front of you is a resolution for approval.
So, if that's the case, I mean, do we have consensus on the commercial? Because I was talking about just the nonprofit rates and getting the nonprofit discount, so...
They have standards.
You have to, so if you're including the nonprofit, you have to include the commercial?
We don't, we couldn't, we can just include, we can just include nonprofit and standard rate, we don't have to have a commercial rate, but since we're having a nonprofit rate, we'd rather have, we should have at least three rates just in case a company wants to come in and have a fundraising and use our facilities, then we will charge the commercial rate.
Okay.
And also, commercial rates are charged for filming too, so all of our facilities that are used for filming, we would charge the commercial rate.
Okay. So...
Let's go ahead and move it.
I move the resolution with the understanding that we'll incorporate the nonprofit standard discounts as well as the commercial fees and clarification on at least minimum of staff and other fees that are included with the one document.
Okay. Thank you.
Seconded.
I'll second.
Sorry, who's second?
I will.
Thank you. Commissioner Sotrian?
Yes.
Fuad?
Yes.
Michaels?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
President Calfayan?
Yes. Before next item, let's salute Mayor Paula Devine and thank you for coming Palmer's reopening ceremonies. The next item, please.
Next, we have item seven, Reports Information Only at A is the Mobile Recreation Program Annual Report.
Good afternoon, President Calfayan, Commissioners, City Staff. My name is Melanie Amazospin, Community Services Coordinator at Pacific Community Center. Today, I'm going to be reviewing the Mobile Recreation Party on the Go and Glendale Rocks Annual Report 2016. The Mobile Recreation Program currently consists of the Party on the Go and Glendale Rocks. Both programs are available for reservation seven days a week at any of our Glendale Parks and Facilities as well as at a private residence, business, or organization within the city of Glendale, Lockwood Center limits. In August 2016, Communities and Parks staff began offering sport-themed soccer and basketball party packages. We saw this unique opportunity to combine facility reservations with the Mobile Recreation Program. Since I already conduct facility reservations at Pacific Community Center, we were receiving a number of inquiries from customers asking if they do rent the facility, is there any other entertainment activities that we offer? So, we saw that unique opportunity and decided to combine both of them together. And our next slide is our Party on the Go packages that we offer. So, the first one is our standard Party on the Go package that we already offer. We go out to any of the Glendale, Lockwood Center areas only, limits to residence or event locations, business organization, and any of our parks, facilities. So, it's two hours of staff-led games and activities for up to 12 children and they can choose any combination of arts and crafts or sport-themed games. And that's $300 package, that's our standard package. The next package is Package A, it's our basketball package. It's the use of the Pacific Community Center gym for two and a half hours, two staff-led activities for up to 12 children and activities that include two themed arts and crafts and four themed sports activities for $500. The next one is our soccer package. It's the use of the Pacific Community Center multipurpose field for two hours, use of one of the picnic shelters for two and a half hours, and again, two staff-led activities for up to 12 children, including two sport-themed games and arts and crafts, four sport-themed games, my apologies, and two arts and crafts. All of these, that fee is for eight, $587 and $587 and 50 cents. All the fees are commission-approved fees. What we essentially did is we bundled them into one lump sum package as opposed to breaking them down, so you still have your standard party on the go and you have your facility reservation and we just combined them together to offer the customer one lump sum option as opposed to breaking them down for them. So, when a customer comes in and says, hey, I want to book your gym, but I also want activities for my party for an event, and it's like, great, here we are, we have these packages that we can offer for you at one lump sum price. So, in 2016, the number, the number of rentals were received for Party on the Go were 19 rentals. 15 of them were for private, private events and four of them were city, city-sponsored events, some of which included our annual Cesar Chavez commemorative event, Cruise Night, National Night Out, Spring Extravaganza, Halloween Spooktacular at Ceritos Park. And as you can see, we're going on an upward trend in comparison to previous years. So, similar to our Party on the Go, we have our Glendale Rocks climbing wall and our first package is the standard package that we offer for the Glendale Rocks climbing wall for, we go out again to the, either the Glendale resident or event location within the boundaries of Glendale and Lockwood Center areas, and it's the use of the climbing wall with two staff with all the climbing wall gear and equipment. And similar to the packages we combined for Party on the Go, we took the same approach for the Glendale Rocks. We used, again, the use of the Pacific Community Center either gym or A or B for two and a half hours and then the climbing wall with two staff with wall gear and the equipment. And that package, again, we combined the same fees for the Glendale Rocks wall and the use of the facility and we combined them together for a package of $600. So, the statistics on the rentals for the Glendale Rocks wall for 2016, we had eight, eight revenue GUSD nonprofit rate rentals, three of them were for private rentals, and seven were for non-revenue special events. Some of the special events, which included our annual Cesar Chavez commemorative event, our Glendale PD Open House Event, Glendale Fire Service Day, and two out of those three private rentals were party package rentals specifically at Pacific Community Center. So, the Mobile Recreation Program brought in a combined revenue of $7,800, taking into consideration our expenses for hourly salaries, benefits, and maintenance and operation. Our expenditures totaled $4,702, leaving us with a net profit of $3,098. And our efforts to increase our mobile recreation rentals, of course, it's our providing exceptional customer service to, to our patrons and to the community we serve, and we, I've included, I've passed out to all the commissioners, the coloring book that we have, and it's also used as a brochure, a coloring tool for the kids to enjoy and also a business card. We include the mobile recreation in our Community Services and Parks Leisure Guide, our seasonal wrap-up, which is distributed to all the Glendale Unified Elementary Schools. The word of mouth, our customers, we've, we've noticed that a lot of them just really love and enjoy the program and they recommend it to their fellow colleagues, their friends, their family members, so we've seen an increase through, a lot of recommendations through word of mouth. It's in our city website, our department and city newsletter, the brochures that we pass out at various citywide events, Glendale Unified School Districts, PTAs, and foundations, GTV6 channel six, the coloring book, Facebook, Twitter, and the banners. If you've, I'm going to go back to the previous slides, if you've noticed, we recently incorporated the two banners, one for our Glendale Rocks and one for our Party on the Go, and they're inserted into the climbing wall and they're retracted up. We, the parents love taking pictures of their kids while they're climbing the wall and we realized that by them taking a picture, they're bound to open the picture and you have all the information there, the contact information for Glendale Rocks and for Party on the Go. So, we realized that's a great tool for our marketing. And that concludes my presentation. I would be happy to answer any questions.
No questions? Good job.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Next, we have item 7B, Section Activity Reports at One as Recreation and Community Services.
Good afternoon, President Calfayan and members of the commission. I'm Gabrielle Golia, the Senior Community Services Supervisor with the Sports, Civic Auditorium, and Customer Service Sections. I have our, some brief updates on our monthly activities from December. We included in this the Palmer Grand Reopening Event from January, since it is so fresh, we wanted to go ahead and include it in here. We had a wonderful event, as Mr. Bulanekian mentioned, we had more than 400 participants at the event. We had eight organizations, including our department, Glendale Water and Power, Glendale Library, Safe Moves, Glendale at Venice Medical Center, Modern Support Services, and Familias Unidas de la Comunidad. I think I got that right. It was a fantastic event. We, I stayed afterwards for quite a while in the afternoon and I had some, I heard some wonderful feedback from many of the residents in the area, including the parent who had written the email that Commissioner Michaels mentioned earlier, and she said she was not experiencing any of the same issues with the adults and the youth skaters having conflicts together, and she was very pleased with how everything was going at that point in time. So, I do believe that, that the community is, for the skate park participants that I'm aware of, they're starting to really gel together and the adults and youth are beginning to coordinate well. We had our River Walk Cleanup Day on the same day as the Palmer Park Grand Reopening. We had nine volunteers join us for four hours of weeding along the LA River. We snuck that in along with the Palmer Grand Opening in the one day of rain that week, or one day of sunshine that week between the rainstorms, so it was a great day. Back in December, we had our Holiday Tree Lighting Event. It was estimated that over 300 people attended that event, both youth and children. We had some of the school, local schools participate and sing Christmas carols for the audience and they had a wonderful time and their families were there to enjoy it with us. And Mayor Devine lit the tree at the beginning of the event and President Calfayan was our master of ceremonies for both that and for the Palmer Grand Reopening Events. We had our Club Maple Program Holiday Event with over 100 participants. We provided a full dinner for all of our participants. They were given an opportunity to socialize and reflect on the holiday season. It's one of their favorite events, one of our favorite events to throw for them. And our Teen Night Out in December was successful, we had 15 participants attend. They had all attended previous events, we hadn't, we didn't have any new participants in December, but 15 youth did come to the Teen Night Out and they helped us, they watched a Christmas story and then they helped us decorate the tree and they made hats. They made picture ornaments that we put on the tree at Pacific Community Center. And finally, for December, we had our STAR Program. We took the youth participants to see Cinderella at the Pasadena Playhouse, so they got to see some live theater, followed by lunch at a local restaurant. And they also decorated pine cones, which were delivered by the youth and two of our police officers to the Autumn Hills Retirement Home for decorations. So, we've been involving the youth with some multi-generational programming and everybody's enjoying it. That's a brief update on our activities from December and a little bit of January.
How are we doing with the rain?
We are wet. Our ball fields are all, they're underwater, we need some lifeguards out there for the ball fields.
Is anything sliding or anything at the sports complex?
No, no. We've had, yeah, it's been very safe and our soccer fields are actually playable. We have games going on right now, so as soon as the weather clears, everybody gets back out there on that artificial turf, it's fantastic.
Any questions for her?
I have one quick question.
Sure.
I had brought this up earlier, I mean, I see the Teen Night Out mentioned in the presentation, I think it's great, and then we have 15 participants, so you said that all of them had previously attended, so obviously they enjoy their time when they do come. So, do we get to, or do the kids get to kind of say, you know what, we loved what we did this time around, maybe not so much this, and then maybe just have their, if we could kind of take their recommendation or their suggestion as to things that we could maybe do in the future, so we could maybe hopefully be able to cover more participants?
Sure. President Calfayan, Commissioner Wu, my name is Valgeri, I'm the Senior Community Services Supervisor, responsible for the team programming and Teen Night Out. And for Teen Night Out, when we have it every other week at Pacific Community Center, we do take their recommendations into consideration specifically, primarily when they request specific PlayStation 4 games that they want to play before or after a presentation that we have during Teen Night Out. Just this last Friday, we had a Teen Night Out where, if I'm not mistaken, we had Glendale Federal Credit Union come and talk to the teens about scholarship opportunities and financing for college and getting ready for college, and then we had a collaborative event with Library Arts and Culture about incorporating an art component to Teen Night Out, so we had both events taking place simultaneously, back-to-back. We do listen to them, we, we're basically there, those events are there for them, so if we don't listen to them and not cater to them, they're not going to attend. We get about 15 people on a continual basis, sometimes we'll get three that are quartered volunteers, some of them are doing community service, so they attend these additional workshops or lectures to eliminate some community service hours from their requirements. In addition to that, they helped us out for Palmer Park, incidentally, we did a note, but all the sports sacks that we were passing out at our marketing booth, they're the ones that we're actually putting the leisure guides in, all the hot dogs that we passed out to the public, they're the ones pre-filling those bags and trying to speed up that process with the mustard, the ketchup, the, the bags of chips. We listen to them, we're very receptive to what they want. We know that at the end of the day, if we don't listen and we just force things upon them, they're not going to participate and we incorporate whatever they're asking for. So, 15 is our normal baseline number, we get up to 22, 25 people depending on what the activity is for that evening.
Sounds good. Thank you. No problem. Any other questions? Any other questions?
When do you guys start planning the summer series programs? And is, I mean, I'm not sure if it's, if you're in charge.
President Kalfayan and Commissioner Sosatian, for summer programming, for our day camps and our aquatics programs and all of the activities that we do, we're planning now. We begin planning approximately January in order to hire all of the staff and schedule our excursions and schedule our buses and everything that goes into a summer program. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next, we have item 7B, two Park Services.
President, excuse me, President Kalfayan, members of the Commission, Mr. Panosyan is out in the field now dealing with storm damage at Palmer Park. We had a tree fall, and he's out there assisting crews. With that being said, you do have the Park Services report in your packet. He did have a PowerPoint presentation to show you all the good work Park Services does. I'm requesting to move this report over to the following month for February 27th, so Coco can present his PowerPoint to the Commission.
Okay. Any other item? Any questions?
Next is adjournment.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.